Evening, everyone. We'd like to reconvene the Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting of Lake Forest Board of Education. If you would all join me for pledge of allegiance, I'll run a little assignment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you who have joined in person, as well as those who have joined online. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the internet, and that recording, as well as the meeting minutes, will be posted once they are. Start tonight with roll call of board members. Dr. Wyatt?
President.
Ms. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Ralph?
Here.
Vice President Starkey?
Here.
And President Earl Dempsey, serving as chair, is here as well. We have all five board members present. Thank you all being here tonight. Move on to two point, two point four approval of agenda. Mrs. Starkey?
Make a motion, we approve resolution to Michael Hiller as president.
Second. Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Two point five approval of minutes. I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Second. Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Stay. Uh, motion carries three to zero with two abstentions. We're up to section two point six, recognitions, presentations. We have one this evening. Dr. Lucas?
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Lori Siss. And she's our military family liaison from Dover Air Force Base. And we've got a little something for Lori in honor of the National Veterans and Military Families Month. We'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition. And then we put together this little letter of appreciation. I'd like to read if that's okay. On behalf of the entire Lake Forest community, I want to thank you for your service as the school liaison program manager for our school district. Your steadfast commitment to our district has been noteworthy and is greatly valued. As the school liaison program manager, you've taken the time to personally visit each of our schools, meet with staff and administration to assist us in our goal of attaining Purple Star School status across the district. You have also regularly attended our school board meetings, met with the superintendent to provide valuable information about our military families, and personally invested your time and expertise in our families. Your efforts have not only informed and enlightened us, but have also inspired us to fully embrace our military families and understand the unique challenges they face in supporting freedom. As depend, as defenders of our nation, our na, our service members are often called away from home to fulfill their duties. We recognize that school is a crucial part of the support system for families while their loved ones are away. You've helped us in the district understand how we can support these families and do our part to enable our nation's warriors to keep us free. We thank you for your service to our military members and to us. Moreover, we look forward to our staff at Lake Forest continuing to grow and their support for our military families as we work towards becoming Purple Star Schools. Thank you very much. Can't let you get out of here. We gotta get a picture.
Okay.
Thanks, Lori. Thanks for having me here. So Lori, thank you again, and thank you for being in our meetings. It's always interesting to see those in the audience who are enduring us, that don't have a way to act, too. And you definitely fall into that room, so thank you very much. All right, thank you, Dr. Lucas. Up to two point seven citizens' participation, uh, opportunity of, um, the opening of each board meeting for members of the public to address the board. Uh, those who were wishing to address the board, we did ask to, uh, sign up at the front table and to present the sheet to, um, any superintendent's office, um, and then we ask any speakers to hold themselves to an approximate three-minute timeframe. Uh, we do have one this evening, a familiar name, a familiar face, Mrs. Mary Oshel from the Lake Forest Community Education Foundation. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you for allowing me to speak to you for three minutes. Uh, actually, I'm just here to invite you all to the Gobble Wobble. Uh, and also, I think it was important that we recognize, I'm gonna just cut these down. Um, these postcards went out to all the students. Most important part sharing this, not only the date and the Gobble Wobble, is also to recognize our sponsors. And I, I wanted to publicly thank them. Uh, we reached our goal for the first time in eight years. I've always had a target amount. And this year, I, we met it, and that was very exciting. And so we have some new people. We have Food Lion, which was very exciting, and they are very excited to be at the, at the event this year. And of course, we have some standards, but there are several, if you look at the list, that are locals. And then we have a few, um, outreach folks as well. And our towns are also involved, the town of Felton, uh, the town of Frederica. Uh, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we recognize all of them in the minutes. And then I also wanted to tell you what one, um, event we're going to have at the Gobble Wobble was for years of, when we first began, um, having fundraisers, uh, we created what's called a Spartan Hero Award. And this year, we're bringing it back, and we will announce the Spartan Hero at the race this year, and we hope that you will be there um, to recognize them. It'll be, I think it's gonna be around ten thirty-ish that, after the race, but before we hand out the medals. Okay? Any questions? Does everybody have a postcard that they'd like to have? Some of you, many of you were signed up. Thank you. Uh, we have almost three hundred people signed up so far. Uh, we'll see if we reach our, um, goal this year. My goal is five hundred, but I don't think we'll get there. We'll get to four, maybe.
So I know it's on the postcard we have. I don't recall if you said it publicly tonight or not, but it is when?
Oh, yeah, November twenty-fourth. It is eleven days away, I believe, ten tomorrow, so. Yeah, we're fast and furiously collecting things. We have a lot of new prizes for our kitty walk. Um, books that were donated this year and a few other things that we've added, so we have some fun things going on. Uh, plus the, the gift cards that we, um, that we get, we'd have eight hundred dollars worth of gift cards to give away. For those that don't win a medal, of course, you wanna have something, some prize, right?
Great.
Yeah, so it's a fun time. A lot of community is there. More things to come next year. We've got, it's maybe some changes next year. We'll see.
Well, best wishes on a good, strong, safe event. And thank you, as always, for everything that you and the foundation do for our district and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be back in January, I'm sure, with grant information.
We look forward to hearing that as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one. And happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, we're up to section three, reports, starting with three point one, student council report. Uh, no report, this week. Okay, sorry. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to three point two, financial report. Mr. Kirk Kelman, welcome, Mr. Kelman.
Good evening. Uh, this evening, we just have the monthly board report, financial report for the end of October, so we're a third of the way into the fiscal year. Uh, not a significant amount to report. Uh, the only real change on the state fund side for the revenue picture is the safety and security funds that came in last month. Um, and then moving on down, uh, with the local funds, you can see we did collect that, that uh, large tax deposit, the large one we, that we get each year. And so, uh, with that, um, you know, that makes up the, the majority of our, our current expense tax receipts for the year. Uh, so you can see where we sit there. And then also, uh, we do have our federal funds that have been, uh, transferred in from DOE as well. So, uh, we're sitting at about eighty-three percent of our discretionary funds received uh, compared to eighty-seven percent last year, but the, um, eighty-three percent's closer to probably where we were two years ago. Uh, so I think last year was a little bit of an anomaly. Um, and then we're at eighty-three percent overall compared to eighty-six percent last year as well. So any questions on the revenue report?
Questions for Mr. Kelman and revenue?
Okay. And then moving on to the expenditures as well, we're pretty much trending, um, no major issues. Local salaries has eighteen pay periods remaining out of the twenty-six, which would suggest that we have sixty-nine percent of our budget remaining, which is exactly what's shown on the, uh, the report there. So, uh, that's good news there. Uh, summer programming, I know we talked about that early on in the preliminary, in the, um, the preliminary budget discussions, and we did recode about thirty-five thousand dollars of expenditures from our summer programming to cares funds, because we had some cares funds, uh, that were available. Um, so we took that opportunity. Um, and then moving down into the school spending on page two, again, that's up about forty percent from last year, but, um, this just might be one of those high years that we have for school, um, expenditure funding, so no major concerns there. Um, discretionary budgets at sixty-six percent compared to sixty-nine percent last year, and all funds budgets were at seventy-two percent compared to seventy-three percent last year. So any questions on the expenditure side?
Any questions on expenditures or financial report or anything at all for Mr. Kelman? All right, thank you, Mr. Kelman. This will come back before we vote later in our session. That, we move to three point three, superintendent report. Dr. Lucas?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. I have big news tonight about South Elementary School. South was just recognized by the National E S B A Distinguished Schools Organization for their work in closing achievement gaps in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four. Only two Delaware schools were recognized. We're very proud of the work they're doing. That's a national recognition. South will be recognized in February at their national conference, uh, in Austin. So congratulations. We got a couple of South people out there somewhere. I see Dr. Ebert. Work. Uh, let's see. We also had the chance this past week to get out to Central Elementary School, where Senator Lawson, Representative Morris, and Education Secretary Dr. Hollidick made a visit to recognize the counselors, Mrs. Jen, Ms. Jennifer Satterfield and Mr. Thomas Garrett. You might remember our reported last meeting that Satterfield and Garrett were recognized with the American School Counselors Association Sapphire Award for excellence in school counseling. So congrats to them, and a big thanks to Senator Lawson, Representative Morris, and Dr. Hollidick for coming out to personally recognize her staff. And I see Mrs. Comgees and Mrs. Markey back there from Central. Uh, fall sports is still going at the high school, which means we have teams competing at the state level, which is great news. Cross-country volleyball and field hockey wrapped upstate competition just recently since we last met, with field hockey advancing all the way to the state semifinals. Congratulations to them on a great school year. Football is still alive and plays Howard, Votek in the opening round and play this Saturday at one P M. at Abecino Stadium. Abecino, is that right?
Abecino.
Abecino, um, in Wilmington. So congrats to all athletes. That is really a great, uh, a great overall season. First marking period is in the books. Uh, report cards were available on the Home Access Center, November eighth, about a week ago. I encourage everyone to go over the report card with their student. If you have any questions or concerns, reach out to your student's teacher, counselor, school principal as soon as possible. As everyone probably knows, we're heading, uh, very quickly into the heart of the holiday season. We have a full week of school next week. The four students take the following week, um, of off for Thanksgiving break. The staff, however, will be working Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. Then we have a few weeks in December before the long winter break, which is a full two weeks this year. Uh, between now and then, number of big events, including winter concerts, which begin December fourth with the jazz band right over at the high school. That will be super fun. Check the district calendars to stay up to date on what's happening, or follow up on our webpage. Of course, we're on social media, Facebook, X, and Instagram. If you really want to talk to somebody in person, just give us a call here or call your school, and somebody will answer your call. So I have, I thank you. I yield the floor back to President Dempsey and the board for any questions or discussion.
And Dr. Lucas, any questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas with superintendent report? All right, thank you again, sir. Thank you. We're up to three point four, buildings and grounds report. Mr. Starr, what, Carl?
Good evening. Uh, tonight, I would just like to take a few minutes to discuss some of the larger, uh, construction projects we have going on around the district this year. Uh, starting with the Delaware Early Childhood Center. If you've not had the opportunity to ride by there lately, the, uh, new multi-sports field is all but complete. Uh, this includes underground irrigation, sports turf, and a perimeter fence will be going around it, actually, that is, uh, scheduled for construction next week. So hopefully, in about two weeks, it'll be wrapped up and be ready for spring. Um, also, we had a new building automation system for the HVAC, uh, completed a couple of weeks ago. This gives us better control of the classroom and multipurpose room for climate control, scheduling, and, uh, setting of occupied and unoccupied settings. We also have, uh, new roofing over the administration area scheduled for later this year. At East, we have, we also upgraded building automation system at East. Um, we have new flooring scheduled for a couple selected classrooms, and new HVAC was installed in the special suite. At North, a few larger projects are scheduled. Uh, this includes bathroom renovations for the first floor and T-wing bathrooms. And actually, that picture there is the first floor bathrooms, which were done this summer. The T-wing bathrooms will be pretty much similar to the way that is set up there. Renovations to the reading wing to include new flooring and painting. Now, that's like four classrooms that we're gonna take, it's very above cafeteria there. And a new boiler gun for heating. Um, this building has two boilers that heat entire school. Uh, the plan is to replace one gun this year and the following gun next year. They're about twenty-five years old right now. So. At South, uh, we had roof encapsulated over the library and administration area. And we also upgraded the building automation system there, similar to what we did at East and at Delaware Early Childhood Center. Central, we are continuing our painting to match district colors. This was, uh, this project was projected to be a three-year project, uh, completing sections each summer. And the plan is to actually have this completed by summer of two thousand twenty-five. And we also have new flooring scheduled for the stage and computer lab coming up soon, actually. WT Chipman, we have a new HVAC system for gymnasium in Chipman West, along with a new chiller for the main building. Uh, we have roof replacement scheduled for Chipman West. Also, new flooring for Chipman West, and just like North, a new boiler gun for heating system. Chipman also, the same way, has two boilers, uh, so we're gonna knock one out this year and then one next year as well. And they're both about same age as, uh, North already were. And also, we do plan to do some locker room upgrades in summer of twenty twenty-five in the gymnasium. At the high school, we were fortunate enough to, uh, have partial roof replacement done, uh, to include the front four hallways, library, tech area, and cafeteria. And we encapsulate the auditorium, lobby, and administration area. We have roof replacement scheduled for extension stand coming up here in the near future. And we are continuing our HVAC replacement that we started in twenty twenty. Uh, to date, we've replaced eighteen of the twenty-six units that were originally installed in nineteen ninety-six, and the plan is to replace remaining units in the summer of twenty twenty-five. Um, again, like some other schools, we upgraded, uh, automation system here as well. So this next slide, uh, just as a comparison of our roof conditions district-wide in twenty twenty and the present day, um, as everyone knows, this has been one of the biggest concerns I've had several years. Uh, on the left, in twenty twenty, uh, we were, we're about forty percent of our roofs were in good condition. Roughly forty-seven were, uh, poor position, three were fair, and six percent were in failure. At present day, on the right-hand side, we're seventy-three percent of our roofs are in good condition, twenty-five percent are fair, and two percent are poor. The majority of the twenty-five percent is Central Elementary, which we're gonna address in the next couple of years. And the two percent is poor is already on schedule for replacement. And as you can see in the slide, we're clearly in a far better place now than we were four years ago with our roots. And that's all I have. If you got any questions?
Thank you, Carl. Questions, discussion for Mr. Starr? With his department's roots. Parked finally, can you refer to HVAC at Chipman?
Yes. It, it, all right.
Yeah, right. So I, or I'll just say, it's, you know, obviously, anybody that's out walking around our facilities can see the changes that are happening, but when you put it all in one place, and you really look at, over time, the things we've been able to do with such a small staff, but also with making investments, you know? We're an educational institution, but we're also an organization like any other, and we have to make investments to, to keep ourselves current, and this just really highlights the efforts that we have done over the years to do that. And thanks to your team for actually being boots on the ground, making it happen, uh, 'cause we have, the, the roof thing is just phenomenal. I remember we've talked about this years after year after year, and, um, you know, to see where we are now, it's amazing.
Miss P fifty-six last dress all made to.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Well, it gives you something to hang your hat on as well. So thank you very much to everybody involved. Yes, this would pass.
Um, I will say, as we had talked before, we'll see how that tur, grass turns out. It looks great.
Yeah.
Hope, um, now you said there's gonna be fencing around. Is it, uh, all four side fencing? How's that?
It's actually gonna be like three. So it's gonna go right along the parking lot of the back parking lot, all the way to the fence of the house behind the school.
Mm-hmm.
And then all the way down the north side of the new field, and then we're gonna tie in this from the school side. So the woods are still there. This year will not have fencing. You may put it up there next year.
Okay, I, well, um, I was wondering if the fence is going there, just 'cause, um, eventually, we could maybe hang some netty, the, the balls do go into that wood there. So there's not gonna be fencing along the, where the fencing is of the long, the houses?
There is.
There is. There's not.
So the woods, which is like further away from the school, that area there, will not have it this year.
Okay, so they'll have to be, there'll be gates for people to get in towards like the bleachers and stuff, and, but there still will be people able to get in for their dogs to.
That's why the fence is going there in South. I mean, they're gonna have to go through the woods probably to get in there.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
More of a drive-in gate, too, ready?
Yes, and drive-through gate, yes. And I don't know if I did mention it, but we started out with a sports turf, which should be pretty durable, because it's too late to plant Bermuda, but if we find out that the sports turf isn't holding up, we'll plant Bermuda in June, so.
It looks great right now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you again. Uh, we're on to three point five, L F E A report. This will need a bullshit. Welcome, this bullshit.
Good evening. Um, we are just very excited with, uh, all the different activities that all the staff and students are doing. Um, the different participations with all the student athletes and the different, and J H S and National Honor Society. So we're looking for that community involvement. We are having Social Mar, where we've raised some money for scholarships, and we're hoping to increase our number of scholarships for the kids um, to be able to give a little bit more scholarship money out to all of our seniors that apply for the position. We are not gonna do the pie in the face this year, but we are doing the basket, basket raffle, so look for that to be coming out. Um, and we're just trying to keep the connections going and have everybody um, try to participate and look forward to everything that's going on. We're looking for the holiday seasons and all the different activities that all the buildings are going through, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Miss Bullshit. Any questions, discussion for Miss Bullshit? So thanks for all that you do. We recognize Mrs. Heather Hitchens being here as well, and wish all of our staff a very safe and happy holiday or Thanksgiving break. Thank you. All right, we're on to section four, unfinished business, four point one, board policies, second reading. Mrs. Starkey?
Uh, make a motion, we approve resolution four point one as modified during discussion.
Second. Motion floor properly seconded. We will move to discussion. So we review these one by one. Uh, so we will begin with C A, administration goals. In discussion towards C A. Seeing none, move on to C B, role of superintendent. Discussion on C B. Seeing none, move on to C B B, recruitment and appointment of superintendent. Discussion on C B B. Dr. Wyatt?
I'm not sure why we need two paragraphs, and as I read it, we go from a candidate must have met all of the certification requirements of this Delaware State of Education for the position to the final selection, and then we start with the district shall advertise the vacancy. Okay, so it's two separate things. No, it's not two separate things. So it talks about advertising after a final selection has been made. So it's almost like the second paragraph should go right before the first sentence of, the last sentence of the first paragraph. Would that make sense?
So the majority of the first paragraph talks globally about the superintendent and the process to get there. And then so are you recommending moving the last pair, last sentence of the first paragraph to the end of the second paragraph?
Yes.
All right, does anybody have any questions, thoughts?
And just missing it, the one paragraph, right?
I would break it up. If, if, that's gonna be a lot of text in one block, if you don't have a broken.
I know, but I just thought, what's breaking up? Isn't that what you were saying? Betty, that it's not really something too great?
Not too different. Yeah, to me, it's all one thing, but I, it is, it would be a long paragraph, but at the same time, it really isn't too separate.
I, I, I would recommend, I, so I agree with the assessment, moving this, the last paragraph, last sentence of the first paragraph to the end of the second paragraph. I'm, I would maybe just leave it as that.
That's true, okay.
I think there is enough separate content there to, to leave it that way.
Well, my I don't
Ms. McCloskey?
I don't necessarily it just seems like it's in order, though. Like, if you're splitting, what are you splitting? Because it actually, if we're moving that, then there, it almost seems step-like. If you were gonna move, I would say then if you, if you were gonna split it, you would have to split it at like in order. Like, because if that's when it's basically listing, i- it, it almost falls into where it's going in, in order of how it would happen. I don't know if.
The only thing for me is in the first, in that global section, Mr. Dempsey mentioned, there's a lot of May. And then the second section, there's like Wilt and Shout.
A shout.
So that's the only, this, this, um, there's a discerning factor there with that, 'cause I mean, ultimately, content is content.
Yeah. So you're saying ending the first paragraph then after position, just taking that second, the last sentence of the first paragraph and putting it at the end of the second paragraph? Okay, that, that makes more sense.
All right. If we can make that change, we will pass it, you know, for a second reading tonight. Thank you all. Move on to C B D, superintendent's contract, discussion on C B D. Seeing none, move on to C B E, superintendent's salary compensation and benefits. Discussion on C B E. You know, move on to C B J, superintendent's termination of employment. Discussion on this policy. And finally, move on to C H slash C H A, policy implementation. Discussion on this policy. All right, so that concludes our individual review of each policy. Any further discussion from board members? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Moving to more fun with section six, board policy, six point one, first readings. This is a discussion item, and we have several to go through as efficiently as we can. We'll start with A C, non-discrimination slash equal opportunity. Any discussion or questions on this policy? So I see that there is a, a, quite a bit new there. I would assume that may have come from council?
That's correct. Um, the federal, uh, policy changed, uh, over the summer, um, for Title Nine. Um, the recommended policy that was submitted to us was approximately thirty pages long. And, uh, so what we did was we took the elements that were missing, uh, from our policies related to Title Nine and discrimination, and beefed up our two policies, this particular one, non-discrimination, and the next one in subsequent review.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Mormon. Anything on this policy? Seeing none, we move on to A C A, sexual harassment and grievance, pro, grievance process, Title Nine. Questions or discussion on this policy?
Same thing.
Yes, sir. There is a lot to this one. We added nothing. All right, seeing none, move on to A D, educational philosophy slash school district mission. Any questions or discussion on A D? Seeing none, move on to A E, accountability slash commitment to accomplishment. See now move on to A E Accountability slash Commitment to Accomplishment. Any discussion on policy A B? See now move on to A E C Accomplishment Reporting to the Public. Any discussion on this policy? Seeing none, we move on to B G D also C H B Board Review of Regulations and Discussion on this policy. This is a B policy. Oh, yes, thank you. So uh the this policy and the next policy, these are board level policies. Um, so the way our policy uh implementation program works is that all of our policies first go to a policy committee of district stakeholders that are reviewed prior to coming to us for first reading. Uh, the board level policies, uh as Mr. Mormon mentioned, these B policies uh do not follow that. They are considered actual board policies of ourselves. Uh, they do not go to that board. So this first reading is the first, our eyes is the first set of eyes that are on it. So this policy and the next one. Thank you, Mr. Mormon. So with that long winded late intro. Any discussion on B G D? Seeing now we go into B H A and the second board level policy, School District Logo and Motto. Questions or discussion on this policy?
Right.
Yes, Mrs. Stern, sorry.
Um, I do know we use a lot uh the model of excellence in education. Like, is that a formal logo or a formal formal motto, or is that just something that we use as a district or?
It is. So a great question. And it is back in A D. Um, it is our vision statement uh to be the model of excellence in education. So that is where that phrase pulls from.
But we that doesn't need to be included on our logo and motto.
None.
Yes, that seems to be no.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Stern. Okay, go on to E D B Maintenance and Control of Materials and Equipment. Any discussion on E D B? Moving on to E D C. Community Use of School Property. Uh, so discussion on this one. So the one thing I will say, the reason I I delayed, I got confused because the heading of this is crossed off, but it is not replaced by by something. So we will need to add. I assume it is the authorized use of school loaned materials and equipment that's listed on the uh, oh no. That's the same one. So we'll just need to clarify what the title of this one is.
But it says.
It's recommended.
We moved it into E D B.
This policy is recommended to be moved into E D B.
Which is the one we just.
Sorry. Yes, and it is there. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah. No, Mr. Weller um recommended that we do combine those two policies. Yes. Yeah, so sorry. Yep, sorry, I didn't catch it either. So with that, any concerns about that with the previous policy we reviewed and re reducing this one? Uh, G B J C Criminal History Record Information. Questions or discussion on this policy? Uh, so the note to the board is that this policy is a new policy. It is not one that's contained within the format, the manual that we follow, um but with some state level stuff, we need to have one in place. In discussion on this. See none move to G D J classified Staff Assignments and Transfers. Questions on this policy or discussion? See none, we want to I J K Supplementary Materials Selection and Adoption. Questions or discussion on this policy? See none, move on to, I believe is our final policy, K B E. Relations with Parents slash Booster Organizations. Any discussion on K B E? All right, see none. We'll close our individual review of these. Um, policies will come back up for a vote later in the meeting. Or any discussion as well. With that, we're up to some action items. Section seven amendments. Mrs. Stark.
I made a motion to approve resolution seven point nine and seven point two.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All right. See none move to vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero.
Section eight personnel resignations that make motion, we approve resolution eight point one and eight point two as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? See now you move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero.
Section nine personnel retirements and make a motion, we approve resolution nine point one through nine point six.
Reluctantly seconded. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Comment, there's quite a few dedicated rock star individuals not with us. I wish them well. Thank you, Mr. Ral. Mrs. Starkey.
Just people, I think, are the best, like, force. So it's always, I mean, I know we're replacing them with new blood, but um and new new Spartans, um who will make this their home, but it's hard to see some of those. These are all those old faithfuls going on.
Doctor Wyatt.
Yeah, it's just the same echoing same.
And I I would say the same as well. This is what a as a board, as a as the leaders of the organization, this is while it's hard to see it, this is what you like to see. You like to see people who have dedicated their entire career to your organization. Um, it's tough to see them go. Um, but you know, what you would be alternative is to have the constant turn every few years of people coming and going and, you know, love to see this. And there's at least uh we can all say this, right? There's at least three, four people in there that my kids all had. Um, and that's hard to say. And then we're losing um a very dedicated, very excellent administrator as well. So we'll be missed. What's that?
An employer's partner as well.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so um begrudgingly, we will call for a vote. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section eleven Personnel Transfers and Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution eleven point one to eleven point six as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none will move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero.
Section thirteen Personnel Orders of Employment and Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution thirteen point one through thirteen point nine as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none will move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section fifteen Personnel Leaves of Absence and Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution fifteen point one to fifteen point three as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none will move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Uh, we are up to section eighteen Personnel Administrative Contract Renewals. So uh as during the executive session, I prefaced the discussion with the board that this was one of the most important agendas for us as a board each and every year. Because what we're doing here with our administrative staff, with our actual district leaders, it truly, truly means something. Uh, traditionally, uh we have gone one by one, uh called out each individual name, done an individual vote. Um, the board has decided this year that that is not necessary. Uh, with the uh great vote of confidence that we have in our administrative staff. Uh, we are going to uh vote or we're going to motion. Uh, we're going to move for all of them approval uh together. Uh, with one exception, which we'll cover in just a few minutes as well, the one that drives me nuts each year, but um and we'll talk about that again in just a second. So turn it over to Mrs. Stark.
Section eighteen Personnel Administrative Contract Renewals, We Make a Motion to Approve Resolution eighteen point one through eighteen point one four as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Now, with that said, uh, I do not want to uh just pass over it without having these folks recognized. So if you would please stand uh as recognized. Uh, this this Katie Comages. Uh, Mr. James Dick. Mrs. Lisa Fox. Mrs. Sarah Huber. Mr. Kurt Telman. Mrs. Jess Leon. Dr. Stephen Lucas. This is Kim Markey. This is Jennifer Montano. Mr. Travis Moore. Mr. Ryan Napsinger. Uh, Mr. Luke Pearson. Mr. Jeff Sheehan. And Mr. Carl Starr. So I will say, on behalf of the board, thank you all very much for the job that you do each and every day. You make us proud with all of your results and all that you do. So thank you. And we have one more to go.
I'm staying in section eighteen. Make a motion, we approve resolution eighteen point one to five as written.
Second, the motion, the motion on the floor properly seconded. Miss Randy Short, would you please also stand? So thank you for all that you do each and every day as well, because what you do with those little folks down at Deck, it's phenomenal also. So thank you. Uh, this is that time that due to how Deck is funded and being grant funded, uh we are unable to approve this position until we know that the funding is secured. Uh, so that typically means that uh the the contract uh tonight uh gets a a no vote and it is brought back to us once the funding is confirmed later in the spring. So uh but Mrs. Short, again, absolutely no reflection on the job that you're doing. We're glad to have you. So uh with a motion properly seconded, uh we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, nay, nay. Any extensions? Motion fails zero to five. Section nineteen, start.
Section nineteen Personnel Appointments and Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution nineteen point one and nineteen point two as written.
Second. A motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion in the motion? Seeing none move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero.
Staying in section nineteen Appointments and Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution nineteen point three as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion with the motion? Seeing none move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Chair abstains. That means the motion carries four to zero with one extension.
Section twenty memorandum of understanding, I make motion, we approve resolution twenty point one, twenty four, twenty twenty six M O U with L F E A.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none will move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Still in section twenty M O U's, Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution twenty point two, July to December twenty twenty four, M O U with L F E A.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion with the motion? Seeing none move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty one under business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty one point one, School Choice as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, any to vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Extensions. Motion carries five to zero.
And staying in section twenty one, Make a Motion, We Approve Resolution twenty one point two, Student Instructor Waishy requirement as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any question or discussion on that motion? So I think what is publicly available is the waiver itself. Uh, what I would like to hear, just for the record, although the board has seen it, is just uh the actual status of where we are in the schools. Mr. Mormon, I assume.
Yes, sir. Um, so one of the advantages that we have this year is that normally we we board approve or ask the board to approve two waivers. This year, because we were able to allocate ninety eight percent uh of units earned to every school as required by state law, we do not have to request the board to approve that waiver for this year. So that is the first time in my tenure here. Uh, so we're excited to be able to um to be able to accomplish that. Uh, this particular waiver uh is pretty standard in the sense of the class size. Expectations or state law requires that class sizes remain no higher than twenty two to one ratio between the students and the teacher in elementary grades K to three. Um, generally speaking, we normally are not able to meet this expectation. Uh, the requirement indicates that we have to be below that ratio or at or below that ratio by the end of October. Um, as of the end of October, uh we do have two schools uh that were um either at uh or above uh that particular ratio. All four third grade classes at East uh were at twenty three or higher. Um, two of the four second grade classes uh there at East uh are also at twenty three students. At North, four of the five third grade classes uh that are there were at twenty three. Um, and that South, at the time, at the end of October, we did not have any uh classes over twenty two. However, we had several right at twenty two. Um, with the expectation that as enrollment continues throughout the school year, we more than likely would have uh more than that uh in some of these classroom settings. Uh, so therefore, we ask the board to consider this waiver for those particular classroom settings.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Any questions or discussion on the topic of Mr. Mormon or Dr. Lucas or any? All right, with that said, we'll enter, uh, I have a we did a motion and seconded, right?
Yes.
Okay, so um all in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty two under business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty two point one and twenty two point two as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here in none move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty three other business financial reports, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty three point one as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote. All in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero.
And twenty four point one Board Policies First Reading, I make a motion, we approve that as modified during discussion.
Second, the motion. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Here now move to a vote. All in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. Thank you, Mr. Rower. Up to twenty five, section twenty five Board Reports and Discussion Items. Twenty five point one Delaware School Board Association, Mrs. McCloskey.
Well, I was not able to attend the D F E A meeting, but that was because we were at the semifinals for field hockey. And let me just tell you, we talk about what it's like to be a Spartan. And let, it was electric. I'm not kidding. Wesley College. There was like six people there from friends and like a million of us. I mean, if you could just the chance, the students, the kids showing up, it they caught us the, I watched the game like seven times now. Um, and NFHS commentated it, and they just called us the Cinderella story. Like, they were just like, this fan section here is like off the chart. It was the epitome of what our community can be. I love when we make it to kind of these um state events because whether it's basketballs, football, field hockey. It's shows our kids show up for each other. Um, and it was, I mean, it was alumni. I mean, there were people that don't come to any of our games that were at this game. People, um, I would say, so my favorite people who don't know hockey, sitting behind me screaming and yelling and just loving it. And it was, it was one of my favorite memories um for our girls um this year. So sadly, I couldn't make it, but it was a great day. With that outcome, two one double overtime, you couldn't have asked for much more to win, but it went really, really well besides that part.
All right, thank you, Mrs. McCloskey. Up to twenty five point two Legislative Committee. Uh, Doctor Wyatt.
We haven't met again.
Okay.
No good story.
Mr. Rapp, so um Doctor Wyatt and I both received an email from um Mr. Tell with um Legislative Party District. So it's something we might have to talk about the board. Just I'm not sure. I didn't have a chance to read his timeline. Um, you saw that or not, but um we, I'll 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 forward his email to the rest of the board. So you guys can.
All right, thank you both. Uh, twenty five point three, good to the order. Opportunity for board members to address topics not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Uh, twenty five point three, good to the order. Opportunity for board members to address topics not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Floors open. Mrs. Stark.
Just a thank you to everybody, just for the excellence in which you're doing so many things. I mean, the latest thing was the Honor Society. Induction Ceremony last night. Excellent. It looked nice. It was professionally done. Um, I just appreciate the excellence that everyone is. Putting forth and, and really doing a great job for Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Alright, our uh, due to the holiday, this is our only November meeting. Uh, we will not meet again until after Thanksgiving. So wish all of you and yours a very safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday. And a, a well-deserved few days break. Uh, our next meeting will be Thursday, December twelfth. Uh, right back here and again, due to the December holidays, uh, that will be our one meeting for December as well. If you do not believe we have a need for executive session, Doctor Lucas, Sir Mr. Mormon, any board member? With that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. Emotional floor properly seconded for adjournment. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned at seven fifty four. Thank you all. Be safe.